Is this you, uh?
It's 5:29, microphones are live.
Are they telling the corner in the corner with a, with a family dollar?
100 block starts on Capitol. Is that 100 East?
Nor. 100 North. 100 North, or is it the town? No, that's 111. What is 100 North, John?
Hi, how are you?
You got a minute, we'll talk about it.
Almost there. 5:30 on here.
Having the appointed time of 5:30, I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 8th, 2025 Committee to all, get to order please. Would you please stand and join us for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take role?
Alderman Cox.
Rosena?
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderman Purchase.
Here.
Alderman F. Brown.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd accept the motion for the approval of the June 24th, 2025 Committee Meeting.
Second Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Madam Treasurer, do you have a report?
Thank you, Chair. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of June, beginning balance is $64,760,352. We took in total receipts of $23,826,401. We had total disbursements in the month of June totaling $26,906,300, which left the Corporate ending balance in the month of June at $61,626,749. The ending general fund balance includes $9,529,126, which is the ending balance of the ARPA money for June. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted.
So move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any presentations?
No.
At this time, uh, we'd like to take a short break, go into executive session pertaining to 2C6, the setting of price for the sale of real estate.
We need a motion?
Motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They don't wait for Corporation Counsel?
Yeah, wait till he can breathe.
Yeah, I'd like to resume the meeting. Good. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next we have ordinances tabled, or remaining Committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
Ordinance is tabled, remaining Committee, 2025-247, an ordinance to amend ordinance for 99-12-24, green demolition contractors for abatement and demolition of Old Town apartment complex by changing the funding source and authorizing supplemental appropriation of the amount not to exceed $508,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Any, anybody, any, is there anyone who'd like to remove this, or any action? Okay. Uh, Mr. Clerk, could you please read ordinance for CWLP, please?
Ordinance is for committee consideration, 2025-271, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in the amount of $125,000 with Barnes &amp; Thornburg LLP as outside counsel for legal assistance with the U.S. Central District Court case number 23CV3250, Kern-Garter Township Public Water District, Sangamon County, Illinois versus the city of Springfield, for the total amount not to exceed $325,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Ayes have it.
Public Works.
Yes, Public Works, thank you.
2025-272, an ordinance approving the variance request section 153158B2 pertaining to shared access in Plaza Tire re-subdivision of Lot 1A, of the re-division of Lot 1 and the re-division of Lot 29 of Prairie Crossing Platt 1 for the Office of Public Works.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Ayes have it.
2025-273, an ordinance approving, denying the location and sketch map of Plaza Tire re-subdivision Lot 1A of the re-subdivision of Lot 1 and a re-subdivision of Lot 29 of Prairie Crossing Platt 1 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to approve on consent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2025-274 is an ordinance authorizing supplemental number one for preliminary and design phase engineering services, PE1 and PE2, for Martin Luther King Drive Safety Improvements Project, MFT, section number 220049500SP, with Quig Engineering and additional amount not to exceed $69,460 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2025-275, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds for an additional amount of $69,460 may be used for preliminary and design engineering services for Martin Luther King Drive Drive Safety Improvements Project, MFT, section 22-00495-00SP for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2025-276, an ordinance authorizes acceptance, additional right-of-way for Cornell Avenue on the north side of Cornell Avenue and the west of Taylor Avenue for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
General City Business, 2025-277, an ordinance amending Chapter 110 of the 1988 Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding Article 47 to require licensure for the, for the certain secondhand dealers.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Can someone just explain to me, uh, what this actually does, or what are, what are we doing? The language I thought I was gonna read ain't here, so maybe I'm misunderstanding it.
Sure. So what this does is it amends our city code to require licensing for secondhand dealers that aren't licensed by the state. So when you think of your traditional pawn shop, that, that dealer needs to go through a state licensure process. They're completely exempt from this process. But we have other secondhand dealers who might not necessarily fall under the state definition of a pawn shop, um, that, that take in items for resale, specifically copper. Copper's a big one where they can take it in, give money for copper, and they're not licensed under the state. Uh, this would require them to register with the city and then subjects them to, uh, similar requirements, uh, including a 10-day holding period, uh, that, that pawn brok, that pawn brokers need to go through.
Thank you. All in favor?
Uh, what's up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Gregory, I'm sorry.
I would, I would only ask that we, can we put this on a debate for a week? I know there was a gentleman that signed up that had some concerns. It looked like he is, um, not signed up to speak, but I, I just wanna look, look into this a little stronger, um, to make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences for, um, yard sales and some of this, some of these other things. I just rolled by a place that had like a bizarre type of, um, sale thing that they were doing. Um, I, I don't have a problem with it either way. I, I, I think I know what we're trying to get to on the copper side of it. Um, I'm trying to scan through it as fast as I can. Um...
I'll second his motion for a debate.
Thank you. Want a motion for a second?
Thank you.
Got a motion for de, uh, debate and second?
Let you go.
Uh, Sean, any more?
No.
Anything else?
No, I was trying, I'm standing.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Per my conversation with the mayor, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Okay, motion for debate and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Ayes have it.
2025-278 is an ordinance declaring property at Truman Road and Stanford Avenue to be surplus property, directing the sale of said real estate, uh, real property and authorizing the publication of the notice said sale and request for proposals for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion for consent?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2025-279, an ordinance authorizing execution of contract RFP-FD26-09 with Harold O'Shea for the fire station number nine structural design and remodeling work in the amount not to exceed $588,551 for the, for the Office of Springfield Fire Department.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2025-280, an ordinance authorizing payment for an annual subscription for, to emergency services organization ISO for, to provide fire department reporting software and support services for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I have the next one as to hold. Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I'll make a motion to hold.
Second.
Okay.
2025-281, we'll hold.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, that's it. Uh, next we have his unfinished business. Any unfinished business to come before the committee? Alderman Purchase.
Neighbor. Thank you, Chair. Um, this question is for Director Amy. Um, and you don't have to come up. It's just, I was on my way here and kinda driving my area with the heavy rain, and I remember it happened right before you came in, but I had asked Dr. Kira when I learned about the Recompete Grant, and she had like a map that she put together, and she put all of the tracks in each of our wards, and I drove my area over by Walnut going west. There's not a lot of sidewalks and the drainage is real bad, so it's a lot of flooding that's happening, and thought that we could use some of that, but I thought it would be good for all of my colleagues to know where we're at with the recompete and what's going on with it, what phase we're at, and if we could send out an update to everyone.
I'd be happy to send out an update. Remember, that's a planning grant.
Right.
We need funds for use of that.
Mm-hmm.
But making note of areas of concern is important. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Uh, yes, um, Director Fuchs. My, my question pertains to South Grand and Wheeler. Um, you know, before I became Alderman, we're talking back, 2019 is when I got here, but the problem's been going on for years. I had to deal with the courts and, and legal, and we finally got a judge in March, beginning of April to say, hey, tear it down. Staff, I don't know if it was, uh, the corporate counsel staff or your staff, allowed the same people who we took to court and did all this with to have, you can tear it down yourself. So I, I got angry with, uh, it was a legal person I was talking to, and she says, well, Alderman Williams, we wouldn't be able to demo it that quick anyway, so we sought, so, at the same time of her tearing it down and planning to tear it down, we'll move to have this, and July was the deadline. So it is July, and I'm expecting, I'd have seen them rip the roof off to melt it down or do whatever they do with those kind of materials, but that old brick building with no roof now needs to go down, and it needs to happen in July since they wouldn't do it in March.
It's South Grand and Wheeler.
South Grand and Wheeler. It's very obvious. The brick red building without a roof now, and then it's got a bunch of, of salvage all around it. It just needs to go down.
Who's doing the work?
Um, I have no idea who's doing the work, uh, in your department. What do you mean by work?
I mean, who tore the roof off of it?
Uh, the owner. Probably the owner. I, I, I do believe this was a thing with this owner where they wanted to salvage now, you know. They did a Pillsbury thing. I'm gonna go in there and grab everything that I can get of value, and now it's just been sitting, you know, since, uh, April, I'll say. April, May, June, July. So July is here. I, I wanna know, it should be on the demo list and come down. We shouldn't let it go all these months as I saw it looking like that, 'cause it went for years like this already with the brand-new roof. If, some of you guys may know what I'm talking about. It's a red brick building, but it had a brand-new, nice-looking metal roof on it.
I do recall.
Or copper, whatever it is, but that roof is gone now. That structure is still there, and I'm ready for it to come down.
And, and, and you think that it's the owner that actually took the roof off of it?
Yes, unless it's you guys.
I don't believe it is, but let me take a look at it in the morning.
Okay, and, and if you could get with legal, I thought Mitch was gonna have it on the demo list, and I was supposed to see something come through to say, we're taking it down, and July was the date I was given.
The, the, it's, the end of July is what, is what the agreed order was, and, um, they're still working on getting all the asbestos out.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're waiting on right now, is asbestos available.
Please communicate with me.
Yes, sir.
Because I, I don't, I don't want this to be one of those months and months and months, and we still looking like that, especially now that it's in the middle of a chair down. Thank you.
We'll take a look at it, yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Uh, Alderman Carlson.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, I don't normally do this, but I'm, and I think we all have these people in our wards, but I just wanna give a quick shout-out on Friday and Saturday. I've driven down Chatham Road on my, what, my daily trip to Menards. Uh, there were two, uh, two ladies, Michelle and Brenda, who were cleaning up the Big Boulevard in Westchester, uh, in the, in the 90, 95-degree heat. They're sweeping and picking up leaves, broken glass, and then they, uh, they also returned with a gentleman on Saturday at the corner of Chatham and, uh, Westchester. So I just wanna give them a shout-out, and I think, you know, I think we all probably have those people, but I think it's for the betterment of Springfield, and I just wanna share some good news. So, thank you, Chair.
I hope he took some water.
Well, it was perfect. I'll make a joke. It was perfect. I showed up Saturday with water, and both times I showed up late, so it was perfect timing. I couldn't help.
All, all done?
I'm, yeah, I'm good, Chair.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. And, Dave, I hope, you know, if you didn't listen to me, if you'd come back up.
Director Fuchs.
Director Fuchs. Um, I, I just need, um, another update on, on where we are with mowing at the apartments on West Washington. I know we've done it a couple of times. Um, I'm still getting complaints.
We can mow along the right-of-way, but we cannot mow on the property or the older wood frame house that's just to the west.
Yeah, no, and I know we can't, but can we please just add them to the regular rotation for mowing, because it's, it's, it grows, it's growing really quickly.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and then Corporation Counsel, have we heard anything back from EPA or the Attorney General, or anyone, or the attorney for the owner?
IEP A said that if we could get permission from the owner, that we can move forward with, uh, with some removal on there. Uh, the owner has not given us permission, uh, so we're, we're going through legal channels to get onto that property.
I, I certainly hope you remind him that, um, he's racking up bill every time we mow this lawn, and the Alderwoman for that area is not really inclined to forgive those fees.
He's only to write the will.
Yeah, it's, it's really bad. It's, it's really bad, and it would be nice to get this managed before the kids go back to school, but in the meantime, the convent is right across the street, and, and that's what the sisters in, you know, that's what they see looking out their windows, is that nightmare of, of a building. So, um, please ask for a little more urgency in, in getting his, um, cooperation at this point. I'm using all my polite words. Thank you.
Is that it, Alderwoman?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Hold on there, Dave. Uh, Director, I am sorry. Thank you, Chair. Uh, speaking of nightmares of a building, um, there is something going on at MacArthur and Laurel, and it's, it's been going on. There's, it's a building, brick building that's wide open.
Oh, not, not the ice cream shop?
No, no. May it rest in peace. Um, no, no. So across the street from the ice cream shop, um, that building, the front of it was demoed. Um, work was going on in the building.
The Hogland Building, isn't it?
Exactly.
Okay.
And, um, and then work has stopped, and so we're at a situation where we again have them, like, with a building that's open to trespass and, um, looks quite dangerous and unsightly, and, um, also they have, again, taken to storing items on their lots that we zoned them to...
Right there on the corner?
Yeah, to, to develop the, the townhomes on, and it is actually now, um, getting overgrown with weeds.
Right.
So I, I know that we talked about this at the town hall. Did you have an update? Do you remember?
Yeah, I've asked for some information. Uh, I don't know that I've received it, but I'll, I'll check into it tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Alderman Gregory.
I just need clarity, clarity, clarity. Why, why can't we cut grass on, on those, those properties, not only Alderman Conley's, but Donlin and, and this? What's the, remind me?
So, so with...
Mine has construction debris.
Alderwoman Conley's that had asbestos, uh, so then the, the State of Illinois said nobody can go on there.
Okay.
Then, then they said, if you can, if the owner agrees, you can, you can go on there.
Right.
Um, the, so then we reached out to the owner's attorney. They said, no, we're not gonna let you do that. So now we have them in administrative court on the new citations to get on there. So that, that's that property.
Okay, I, I would just make sure that, you know, that's, we, we cannot let these buildings, as long as it is gonna take to turn them over, grow grass to the ceilings and stuff, like, we gotta fi, find every avenue we can to, to enforce that, and, 'cause I, I would say cutting the Boulevard is not charging. I mean, cutting the right-of-way, our right-of-way is not charging him.
Right.
It would be the height of the grass and stuff like that, and consistently being that correct, or if we have to go cut it.
Right, yeah. The right-of-way, we won't charge, but...
Right.
Which it should be.
The Public Works Crew mows the right-of-way, but it's, it's only a couple of feet inside the, uh, the sidewalk. It's, it's unsightly. I'm not saying it isn't.
No, 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 no.
And, uh, uh, we're gonna have some, have to have some pretty heavy equipment once we're finally able to get in there, but it's, I, I can't send anybody in there.
So, and, and, and thank you. I appreciate that. I, I just, you know, I, I know that we're, we're putting licenses forth and things like that. These are the type of licenses we need. This is ridiculous what we're going through with these houses and these apartment complexes and stuff like that. This is totally ridiculous, that we gotta keep talking this, man, about people just cutting their grass on their properties. I don't care who stays in them, they're their properties. This is crazy. Thank you, sir, and that, you know, it ain't towards you, but I, I'm, I'm just really frustrated with, with, with all of this, all across the city. This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we're talking about dumpy properties, I'm gonna bring one up myself, and it's no secret, I'm gonna talk about Old Town. But, uh, I just wanna, I think it's important you all hear where things are, and I'm gonna ask you, Corporation Counsel, if you can give an update to the group. But before you get into that, I just wanted to say, uh, Mr. Fuchs, uh, regarding the mowing of that particular property, in particular along Jefferson and, uh, Brunns, I, I know there's a lot of construction debris, and it all cannot be mowed, but you're, it's on the regular rotation. Please make sure, I know I don't need to say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway, please keep it on that rotation.
Yes, sir.
Because it's, it's, it's the least we can do right now, but Corporation Counsel, if you don't mind, if you could give everyone an update on where we are with this process, and it is unfortunately the court process, which takes a long, arduous time. Sure. So, uh, we, earlier this spring, uh, we prevailed on a summary judgment motion for Old Town for the demolition, which meant there was no dispute of fact, and, uh, and we should be granted the relief sought. Uh, that decision was appealed. Um, on appeal, the court held that we had met most of the factors for summary judgment on the issue of whether or not we could demolish the properties, um, but we needed to go back to have a, um, to have a trial on the narrow issue of the value of the property, um, when compared to the, the value of the property as it sits compared to the value of the property that it, uh, to rehabilitate it. In order to have that trial, both sides would need to get expert witnesses to testify as to the value and what would go in to make the properties habitable. So during that process, the attorneys for the bank, um, because of properties in foreclosure, the attorneys for the bank reached out. Uh, they said that they were told to stand down. We said, we asked what that meant. Um, it was, it was unique phrasing, um, and asked if they were going to continue to participate in litigation. Um, they said that they were told to, to stand down, so we sent them a proposed order, a consent order, allowing us to demolish the property. Uh, they did not, uh, they did not agree to that order. Uh, they also, um, uh, stopped responding to our phone calls and our emails. Um, so we, we need to follow a, a briefing schedule, uh, whi, which, which we're doing, and a discovery schedule. They've missed their discovery deadlines, so now we can move, um, for what are called discovery sanctions. Uh, essentially, they haven't disclosed an expert witness. If they don't have an expert, they can't prevail at trial, so we're asking the court to, um, as a result of breaching the discovery deadlines, grant us judgment. So that's where we're at. It's, it's, um, legal argument. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions about it. We're trying to get this, we wanted to get this to trial as quickly as possible. Now we're trying to get it resolved as, as quickly as possible, uh, but there's still that, is that open court case with an appellate court decision saying we need to resolve, um, evaluation of the property. Thank you for the update. It's unfortunate that we have to go through this long, again, process, but, uh, we owe it to the neighbors to do every, anything and everything to get those down as fast as possible. Thank you.
I was in there over the weekend. I make it a point to go through there, and it's sad. It's really sad.
Anything else, Alderman?
No, sir, thank you.
Alderman Cox.
Director, you know I like you, right? Uh, since you're making a list of things you'll, you'll probably deal with tomorrow and bad properties, the old Hardee's on Toronto Road...
Yes, sir.
...is getting worse by the day. You know, it used to just be a vacant building, no big deal. Now, all of a sudden, uh, there's plywood on the windows. Now we've got more and more vehicles parking overnight. I don't know what they're doing. Um, I don't know if they're welcome. I don't know if the, uh, the owner of that property has invited these folks or what, but it's starting to look terrible. They're not taking care of the grass, they're not taking care of the bushes. Um, it's becoming an eyesore. It's, it's one of the very first things a person coming north on Interstate fifty-five, if they take that exit, that's what they see. Welcome to Springfield, right? Um, and so if you can just ask an inspector to go check it out, see if there's anything that we can do to put some pressure on, uh, whoever that, that property owner is, just to take care of it. Um, I understand properties aren't easy to sell. But, you know, the neighbor across the street, the old Amaco Station, he keeps his grass cut, and he keeps his parking lot clean. Um, you know, I hope he can sell his too, and that becomes a viable business soon. But, um, anything you can do, I would appreciate.
And there are vehicles that are beginning to park, uh...
There's semis in there all the time. Um, it's probably driver's switch or something, or they're, they're swapping trailers, things like that, but I know they're in there overnight. Um, it's not a truck stop, you know?
Right.
Uh, in, in, you know, hopefully nothing nefarious is going on, but there could be. So, um, and I, and, and for the record, I, I have spoken with, uh, the NPOs in the area, and I know they, they do some pretty regular patrols over there just to make sure nothing bad's going on. But, um, if you could shoot some inspectors over, that would be...
Yes, sir.
...appreciated. So, thank you, man. Appreciate it.
Uh, Dave, don't go anywhere. Um, Corporation Counsel, and Dave, I think we spoke a while back about the tow truck business, uh, the, the owners and the tow truck drivers taking their trucks home. Uh, I think we spoke about this a while back, you know? And the que- my question is, is, is it, um, my understanding is they get a thirty-minute leeway and, uh, time to respond to a, an accident or a call-out, so to speak? And I guess we're, they're being ticketed for having their, their tow trucks in the streets or at home?
In, in residential areas. As we've done the research, we found that there's about four tow companies. We, it's, it's the same folks that are getting tickets in the same spaces over and over. So, it's come down to four, uh, separate companies, and really only about one or two people per company.
Okay.
And it's year-round. It's happened year-round.
Well, and, and speaking of these companies, they, they're, they're telling us, telling me that, uh, it take, gonna take them longer to have these trucks parked at their business to respond, to go to their business, get the truck and go, uh, because if they're not there within thirty minutes, we call another company.
Correct.
Has there been any discussion or talk about extending that timeframe or with the police or, uh, and I, I know I, I think I talked to Officer Rummons about this, uh, chief, but I, I don't know if that's, if it has to be brought up in an ordinance or...
I haven't had a conversation with the SPD, but I'd be happy to.
Okay. I didn't know if, you know, I know we, we spoke briefly on it, and I just, I got a call today, uh, one of the tru- uh, drivers shows up for our, our court, administrative court, and then it gets delayed for, you know, and she says, I can't keep missing work to go to this court. So I'm trying to figure out what, what, what exactly is going on.
Yeah. I, I, I'm happy to talk with you about that one, and then I, I can be in this, in that meeting as well.
Okay.
So, I can follow up with you.
Very good.
It's actually a very small number of offenders, if you will.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other, any other old business? New business?
I guess, I think this would be old business.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I guess, uh, I, I hope this is appropriate to discuss, uh, in, in this situation. You're good, Director, thank you.
[laughter]
Sorry about that. Uh, a few of us, um, attended, the, uh, the Horseshoes did a All-Star lunch today, and, um, I just want to say, they welcomed people from as far away as I think Pennsylvania was the furthest traveling team that came in. And they welcomed people to Springfield like rock stars. It was fun, it was exciting, they did a great job, and I, I think that they deserve kind of a, a shout out for that. Um, it was, uh, it was a really, usually those luncheons are kind of boring, and, and you, you just don't really want to be there. It was, it was a lot of fun today. So, um, uh, I, I got invited by, by a friend, and, um, I had a ball, so, um, I just wanted to give them a shout out for that.
Very good. And, and to speak along them lines, uh, they are having the All-Star game, hopefully tonight at Lanford Park, uh, weather permitting, but, uh, six-thirty game time. Anybody wants to go out and see the baseball game?
Quit talking, we go.
Okay.
Move to a journey.
No. Any, any, any more new business?
I just want to speak on, uh, if I can, um, Friday Night Live downtown, um, a, a group of the businesses and, um, supporters of downtown, they put together five Fridays that lead, starting from, um, July eleventh all the way up to the fair, to sort of cultivate business, go down, um, find some things. I found a cool store that got all the socks I liked to wear. So, um, it's some, it's some things down there, uh, get down, support our local businesses. I just wanted to make sure that, that, that was well-known. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anybody else? Now it's time for citizens to sign up to, to speak.
Uh, the first one...
Go ahead.
The first one's Otis Worthy.
Otis Worthy? Okay, does it look like...
Next one is Michael Young. He was with the pawn shop thing, I don't think he's...
He's not here.
Aaron Cahill?
It's cold in this thing. I'm getting there. It's about an hour is all I can take.
Hey, guys.
Evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Hello, council members, mayor, and fellow citizens of Springfield. Since we've reached the one-year anniversary of a sense, the senseless murder of Miss Sonia Massey, I would like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. Um, I would also like to say thank you to those who showed up at the bridge dedication for Miss Massey. Um, I did not know her, but plenty of people I spoke with knew her and said nothing but good things about her. And today, I come before you all due to some more unfortunate circumstances. I'm sure we've all heard on or about July third, twenty-twenty-five, an individual was found deceased. The deceased was later identified as Mr. Derek Warntonby. This brings me to my issue tonight. Unhoused population dying around the city. This isn't the first one we've had since I've been here in the past two years. There have been a crazy amount of how, unhoused deaths in the city. I came to you a month or two ago with possible solution that could have been put up for a vote and ordered. I understand there's an unbelievable amount of red tape when it comes to government. I worked for the U.S. Army for just under a decade, right about five years. I know the red tape, trust me. Having brought an answer to you, I was curious if it has, hasn't been discussed due to lack of empathy, no real reason to find, try to find a solution? Every year, y'all try to find a place to put them so they don't cause issues with the Route sixty-six festival. I know there have been some issues with some money going to organizations that help the unhoused. Not sure where that money's going, what that money's being used for. I know they came in here pretty deep one evening. Um, what if we put a stipulation in one of those contracts to start ordering those trailers to assist in this? We've got plenty of open spaces where we could put these trailers, and each trailer houses six or eight individuals, gives them a private place where they can be them. This may not be a perfect solution, but it helps and it's a start. This solution also helps with the harm reduction aspect of things, that Phoenix Center and Integrate Minds both worked their butts off to deal with. So, harm reduction, you've got to meet the people where they're at. Not everybody wants to kick the drugs right now. Not everybody wants to stop drinking right now. For somebody to kick an addiction, they have to be ready to kick the addiction. They have to understand the only way forward is to stop. Not everybody's able to do that to get into some of these, uh, shelters that we have. Having these trailers that I passed information out on a few months ago would benefit our unhoused population tremendously. It would give them somewhere to go every night, you know? It'd give them somewhere to lock up their belongings so that they don't get their stuff stolen. They're rekeyable, they come with master keys, you know? So it's, is it the best option? It's not. It's not the best option, like, these folks having an apartment or a house or, you know? But it's a start, and we need a start. They're able to go in the shelters overnight, typically, I, I believe. Um, sometimes during the day if it's hot or cold. But these trailers, they help them get that sense of personhood back. And I, I feel strongly that it's a start. And we've, we've had the discussion over and over and over. I believe on that same piece of paper, I left my contact info. If anybody wanted to discuss that, that, y'all are more than welcome to reach out to me. I talked to the guy that sells them and builds them for about two hours one day when I lived in South Mississippi, and they're built to order. So you order two trailers, I get there like, you know, not super cheap, but you order two trailers and they're built to order, you know? Five, six months, they're... And they'll even deliver.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Crooks.
Desmond?
Yes.
All right, my name is Kelly Crooks. I am a licensed clinical social worker that works in Springfield, and I've been working here for the last ten years. And so I really wanted to bring up about the youth mental health crisis that we're going through. Unfortunately, I see youth probably every day. I'm actually taking off from therapy right now to come and talk to you all. And a lot of the youth that I see ask me the same question probably every day. Why does nobody care about me? And unfortunate part is, we are living in the middle of a mental health emergency. I see it firsthand every day with all of my people. I go to the jails. I actually have three jobs. Um, so I see people in the jails, I see youth in therapy, um, among many other places I see kids. Many of our kids, especially in our most underserved communities, are dealing with overwhelming trauma. They witnessed violence, survived abuse, lost loved ones, and grown up in poverty. Some come into my office with more trauma by age thirteen than most adults see in a lifetime. But when they reach the breaking point, when they need urgent help, we send them to hospitals that are already at capacity. Our emergency departments are not equipped to manage a complex childhood trauma. They are overcrowded, understaffed, and often forced to turn, turn children away with nothing but a referral and a hope that the family follows up months later, if they can even afford to. Or, for many of our children, they're sent hours and hours away. We have Springfield youth currently in Chicago that are in hospitals, because we have no place else to put them. And we have hos- we have kids that are hospitalized for weeks, months, because the parents just don't know what else to do. Nobody knows what else to do for them. There's no therapist, there's nothing. A psychiatric bed, hos- hospital bed for a suicidal twelve-year-old should not be the coin toss, but here in Springfield and across Illinois, it often is. And for LGBTQ plus youth, this crisis runs even deeper. I work with trans teens who are terrified just to exist, gay youth who are bullied at school, rejected at home, and targeted by the headlines they see every day. Bills that try to erase LGBTQ plus identities from classrooms and ban gender-affirming care aren't just political, they're deeply personal. Every time a lawmaker dehumanizes queer and trans people on the news, a young person in our city hears it. They absorb it, they question their worth, and too many begin to believe that this world would be better without them in it. Let me be clear, this is not hypothetical. I have sat across from LGBTQ plus youth in Springfield who say they want to die because they no longer feel safe in their bodies, their schools, or their communities, and sometimes even their own homes. And the worst part, many don't feel safe asking for help either, because they feel ju- fear judgment, rejection, or being outed. This is a public health issue, it's a civil rights issue, and it is a matter of life and death. What can we do? We can act. I urge this council to fund a youth focus, mental health crisis center, an alternative to ER for children experiencing trauma, suicidal thoughts, or identity-based distress. Expand access to LGBTQ plus affirming therapy, especially for trans youth navigating gender identity under threat from national rhetoric. Support school-based mental health programs, including trauma-informed care and LGBTQ plus peer support groups. Partner with LGBTQ plus community organizations like the Phoenix Center and clinicians to ensure safe, inclusive spaces for all Springfield youth, especially those in, those most marginalized. And most importantly, speak up. Your voice matters. Our kids are watching. When you take a public stand for mental health, for trauma care, for queer youth, you're telling them that their lives matter here. And to the young person who's out there struggling, who may hear this, you're not broken, you're not alone. There are people in the city fighting for you, even when the world feels like it's not. And what I tell a lot of my clients is, is you are valid, you are loved, and you are seen. But it cannot just be the therapists and the social workers. We need our leaders, and we need you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Pasha.
I'll try and keep it succinct. Uh, we lost a couple restaurants downtown in just the last week alone. I don't have easy solutions for downtown, and I'm sure you guys as a council and previous councils, and probably future councils, would be discussing this for long to go, but, I mean, it's getting really bad, guys. Like, really bad. Like, I can go downtown on a Friday, Saturday, just park anywhere I want, because there's nobody there. The businesses are dying down there. What happened with Adam Street? I mean, that, that killed it. I'll be quite frank, Cafe Moxo's not coming back there. They're just not. That was a downtown institution, and the lack of follow-through after that incident in terms of actually helping those businesses recover from it, I mean, how chagrin would you be to find out that the Elf Shelf didn't receive a dollar from those three rounds of funding? I mean, that's the kind of results we see in terms of rehabbing that area. And as someone who will soon occupy a space downtown for my radio station, which will launch by January, uh, I hope you guys look forward to that, because I do. But I, I think it's interesting, though, somebody who will be a downtown inhabitant when I walk around downtown, and somebody who's been a downtown Denzian for decades at this point, I went to school at Springfield High, so my afternoons were spent perusing the racks of recycled records, getting lunch at the places downtown. My memories are strong there, but then I'm running out of places to remember. Most of the time, when I have people come to the city and they ask me about places, I'm having to get really selective about where I recommend going downtown, because quite frankly, I can't even get a comprehensive list from places like Downtown DSI or other organizations that you would think would have some level of knowledge about those kind of things. You don't even have a comprehensive list of the businesses. Go check their website. Four oh four not found, service not available. Their map of the downtown businesses is Google. Sends me to Google. Is that a joke? I mean, that, that is not helping these businesses downtown, and you guys will hear about it next week, because the Waker is gonna come talk about it, and I wish Mary And I wish Mary Flo would come talk about it because they have some of the best food and they're leaving because they don't have the business to support themselves downtown. And it's not because we don't have the people in this area to support it, it's because the people don't feel like downtown is a viable place. And whether that's a fair or not judgment, the results are right there. You might have to believe me. I mean, think of a business you liked five years ago downtown. Where is it? Is it there? Probably not. And that should be worrisome to all of us. Downtown's a gem. It really is, but it's not being treated well by the stewards of it. And that's not an attack on DSI. It's not meant to try and put them on the carpet and shine a spotlight and say they're not doing what they're supposed to, but what they're doing is not working. And that's a problem because quite frankly, the worse downtown gets, the worse it's going to get for all of us. In that essence, that's a lot of tax revenue, that's a lot of customers, and with losses like the Wyndham, I mean, is that place ever going to reopen? When's the last time you saw a hotel go down for months? No power, no water, no electricity. When I get my tower built here soon, I'm going to have a lot of competitors. I signed that lease and sent it in as soon as I found that out because those towers are all getting moved. You know how much it costs to move a microwave tower? I'll tell you, it's got to be pretty necessary if you're going to pay those costs because it ain't cheap. And that's the kind of thing that we're going to see. So how much tourism have we lost from the Wyndham being closed? We don't have the capacity to fill all that, right? So all those businesses didn't get those tourism dollars these last couple of months. And what's been done about the Wyndham? I know there's city resources going into it, but how far are we away from that even opening? There's no updates. The owners aren't sharing anything with the downtown owners. So if you're a downtown owner right now and you're thinking about, should I take a loan? Should I get a mortgage on my house to keep this place open? What's my hope? I mean, I don't know about you, but if I were a business owner developing that kind of stuff, because I don't need customers, I'm going to be a radio station. You can listen to me anywhere you want. You don't have to come downtown. Although we will have an on-street studio because we're going to be an inviting community space. But I guess my point on that is though, is that like, that's a real consideration because a lot of these owners are getting really worried. And the conversations they're having aren't about investing deeper in downtown because they're not feeling like anybody else feels that way. And I just, it worries me, the idea that we're going to have a lot of empty spaces, not a lot of businesses left, and the ones that are there are going to be hanging on desperately. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Robert Williams.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Williams. I want to get something cleared up. This lady at the scene falsely accused me of stalking her with a baseball bat. I didn't even know she was in front of me. If y'all look at the cameras, you'll see I had paid her no attention, no mind. And she had me arrested and charged for order protection. And me and this lady used to talk. We were familiar with each other. And I thought we was going to go somewhere with this relation, you know, as a friend. I thought I could, you know, see something with her, but she fooled the hell out of me. She said I had a bat, which is true. And as y'all know, I had a problem with both of my legs and I had lost my cane, so I was using that bat as a crutch. And then like I said, if y'all look at the camera, I never did acknowledge this lady or see this lady, period. I was just walking to go to see Shannon for an apartment that we had scheduled to see. And I never got a chance to do it because I was arrested. Now, when I was arrested, I was placed in Family Godders. And I'd never been in this place in my life. And I was there for three days, two or three days, and I was kicked out for no reason. They said I was brought out the facility. How you going to borrow somebody that had never been there? See what I'm saying? And if you check the records, I'd never been there. And then when I spoke to my lawyer, she said I should sue him, you know, but she said it with an attitude like, she was like, she was mad. Why? I don't know. You supposed to be representing me. But she doing a good job. I ain't taking nothing from her. I like her. She a good person. She do care. Because I'm still out here. And, but guess what? Soon as they kicked me out, I relapsed. And my intention was to get clean and sober. But I took my check, my debit card, and went straight to the weed spot, to the ATM machine first, then the weed spot, then the liquor store, and got toasted. And none of this was supposed to happen. If they just did their job, I was ordered by court to go to this facility and they accepted me. So why you going to accept me and then kick me out? I don't understand. So I feel like I'm being set up for failure, you know? But it ain't going to happen because I refuse to break the law. I do not, if y'all read my case, it's under the Freedom of Information Act. I'm going to say this one more time. I did not rape nobody sexually. It's Adam and Eve, not Adam and Steve. No disrespect to the LGBTQ. Because I have friends that's gay, females and males, and we kicking. But I don't understand how they let it accuse me of doing this and doing this and I'm not doing nothing but minding my business. You know, I'm just like a trick daddy. We love the kids. I got kids, grown kids. And I don't like the way I'm being labeled, you know? Hey, I ain't going to take nothing. I ain't going to kill nothing. I ain't going to let nothing die. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you.
Roy Walton.
Hold on just a minute, Roy. Hold on just a minute. Thank you.
Well, in the meantime, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Go.
Okay, today I'll be talking about the difference between police surveillance and stalking. It says the key difference between police surveillance and stalking lies in intent, legality, authority, and context. For surveillance, it says the authority conducted by law enforcement or government agencies. The legality, legal if done under proper procedures such as warrants or judicial oversights. The purpose, to investigate crime, ensure public safety, and gather intelligence or monitor suspects. The oversight, subject to rules, regulations, and potential court review. The transparency is often secretive but can be challenged or reviewed through legal channels. Stalking, the authority is done by private individuals without legal authority. The legality is generally illegal, considered a crime, offense, or harassment. The purpose, often for personal obsession, control, intimidation, or unwanted attention. The oversight is none because it's conducted without oversight or legal justification. The transparency is secretive and typically causes fear or distress to the person being followed. An example is an ex-partner follows someone to their workplace daily, sends unsolicited messages, or monitors their location without consent. This behavior has been participated in by the Springfield Police Department. Furthermore, it says, according to these documents, not only does officer's unprofessionalism constitute as misconduct, but can be applied as stalking when charged with a complaint attached. Chief Bill once said, if he has officers like this in his department, he wanted to be notified so he could have them removed. Well, chief, here's a few you can start with. Officer Mumaw, 859. Officer Day, 580. Sergeant Brown, S667. Officer Farley, 844. Now, these other remaining officers remain professional. They were all professional throughout the incident and served as backup. Officer Orr, L847. Officer Diaz, L861. Officer DeLeon, L966. Officer Latrell, 931. Sergeant Dorsey, S570. And Officer Dalton, 945. I did that just to show y'all that this is not personal, but the behavior participated by certain officers needs to be addressed. It's a problem when you're stalking our kids, when you're stalking a certain neighborhood, when you're stalking a certain block. It is no longer surveillance. Where's the documentation that authorized for you to sit on my block and then when I walk towards you with a camera, you hurry up and pull off because you know you're supposed to be somewhere else? Or doing something else? Let's decipher the difference. Stop using one hole to apply it to everybody. Your chief of police asked me, when I told him that one of my sons was being harassed because of something another one did, he said, well, if they hang together, what do you expect us to think? Well, I hang out with you guys. I take pictures with the mayor. But I have a criminal history. Is the mayor part of my conspiracy? Are y'all part of my conspiracy? My past life? What? The same things don't apply if it's dealing with somebody that's considered legitimate or legal or leadership? Come on, man, it's the same effort. And that mind frame needs to stop because just because you're my cousin doesn't make me a drug dealer, a killer, a robber. I'm not on no paperwork for that. So why do I have to be subjected to this just because my cousin lives in my auntie's house and we go visit them? Then when I leave because you associated me with them, all of a sudden now I'm a killer? It needs to stop. And these officers need to be investigated or suspended pending the investigation because their behavior is classified as a lot of things. And we plan to move forward and ask for these type of actions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Brianna Roberts. Brianna Roberts. Brianna Ellers.
Hold on just a minute, Brianna, please.
Oh, but I need extra time. Can I go?
Actually, we're going to cut it down to three.
No, come on. I'm going to speed read. I need you all to stay with me, all right? Oh, I'm spiffy. So fancy. Almost like I'm back in the 20th century. This week, we're going to explore the history of how entertainment moguls have influenced and gained control of worldwide politics via organized crime in the United States. Our story starts in 1929 when mob bosses Meyer Lansky and Lucky Luciano created Murder Inc. Murder Inc. was a collection of hitmen that acted as the strong arms for the National Crime Syndicate. Hundreds of murders were carried out on behalf of the mafia through Murder Inc. In 1943, Willie Moretti, the underboss of the Genovese family, forcibly got Frank Sinatra out of a bad music contract with the utilization of a gun. It is said that Sinatra owns a lifelong debt to the Genovese family because of this, and it is worth noting that the Genovese family is still operating out of New York today. In 1947, Sinatra visits Cuba with $2 million and is escorted by Al Capone's Chicago outfit to deliver the money to Lucky Luciano. This occurs after Sinatra is seen meeting with Meyer Lansky in New York. In 1951, my great-grandfather attends a sermon given by Prince Philip at the Christ Church in Atlanta, where Frank Sinatra also performed. Although his political career had him traveling the country, he was a prolonged member of Christ Church Congregation in Springfield, Illinois for most of his life. In 1952, Lansky is ready to run his gambling business out of Cuba, but the Cuban people no longer want Batista as their leader. Batista then took over Cuba using a military coup. From 1952 to 1959, the mafia knowingly runs Cuba and is collecting millions of dollars with full support from the Cuban president. They exploit and capitalize off of Afro-Cuban music, Latin jazz, and Cuban secret societies like Santeria. In 1955, Fidel Castro starts a revolution as Cubans feel Batista isn't a legitimate president and isn't fit to lead. Lansky responds to Castro's revolution in 1958 by pleading with the Dominican Republic to house his gambling operation. However, the plan failed and resulted in President Batista fleeing Cuba with $300 million deposited in Swiss banks. Castro's revolution for Cuba was successful in 1959 after Batista's military was murdered in Lansky's casino. Sinatra then introduced JFK to the Chicago outfit to get the unions to vote for him. This plan is successful and it stirred rigged election claims in Illinois in 1960. After JFK is elected president, he, along with the CIA, Frank Sinatra, and the Chicago outfit, plot the assassination of Fidel Castro. Castro survived two poison pills, an exploding cigar, a drug-soaked microphone, and even bazookas. When these attempts didn't work, Kennedy started working on Operation Northwoods. This was a planned attack on US soil to sway the opinion of the United Nations to justify military force in Cuba, cue the Cuban Missile Crisis in 1962. This is also when Kennedy tries to distance himself from Sinatra. Kennedy is assassinated in 1963, a month after the CIA finds Lee Harvey Oswald passing out fair play for Cuba pamphlets in New Orleans. During this time, Warner Music Group acquires Sinatra's label and allows him to retain one-third ownership. They even built him a bungalow-style home on the Warner lot to act as its luxury office. Being snubbed by the former president and picked up by Republican viewing Warner Brothers, Sinatra then switched parties from Democrat to Republican. He endorses Reagan in 1970, Nixon in 1972, and states that he hopes the president of the State of Palestine is caught and executed in 1982. He would follow this statement with engaging in philanthropy in Israel. 1982 was giving rise to yet another entertainment mogul with deep Israeli ties. Lyra Cohen's first job was the National Bank of Israel, obtained through his mom who had a history of working with the Israeli government. This is the largest Israeli bank and boasts that its creation is to further the Zionist movement. Being unhappy in his banking job, he shifted his focus to DJing and started capitalizing off black artists' blood, sweat, and tears while desecrating their very culture. In 1988, Cohen is named the president of Def Jam Records and is managing DMX. This made way for him to manage more artists in the 1990s like Ja Rule, Ludacris, and Murder Inc. During this time, Jay-Z starts calling Cohen his mentor and playfully gives him the nickname Little Lansky because of his shared heritage and ruthless demeanor, which was like that of the prior mob boss. In 1998, Cohen breaks Def Jam records from the parent company Sony and creates Island Def Jam under Universal. He then starts working with artists like P. Diddy and Kanye West. 2003 brings legal trouble for Cohen. The federal court accuses him of working with New York crime bosses, much like Sinatra, and laundering money through the record label at the expense of the artists. He loses the lawsuit and the judge calls him moribly reprehensible and liable for millions in punitive damages. Cohen was found to be working with people like Kenneth McGriff, who was a New York crack kingpin, and was alleged by the FBI for plotting the assassination of 50 Cent in 2000. They also have suspicions that McGriff was involved in the death of Jam Master J in 2002. To bring things full circle, Cohen accepted a position at Warner Music Group in 2004. I'm sure he fit right in as both Cohen and Warner have a history of capitalizing off of the destruction of black artists and their cultures dating
Thank you very much.
Almost not at all. I can see, only a little bit left.
Robert Fraser.
Check, Aaron, wait, please.
It's analog.
Is that the first clock when you first became alderman years ago? Your first row? I don't see nothing else to come before the council. Entertainment motion, motion, German. All in favor? Thank you.